We'll call this meeting on February fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-one for the Paschatan County Board of Ministers to order, and at this time I'll ask Sean Lyden to give us an indication, and then Bill Stare for the pledge allegiance.
It's power ahead. Praise the heavenly Father as we gather here to conduct business in the county this evening. We are thankful to men and women around the world serving our country here in Florida that allow us the freedoms and privileges to assemble here tonight. Please keep us firm and resolved in our calling to represent those who elected us and to govern fairly and act as good stew to the public trust.
Mr. Stare, please.
That's right. Please rise.
To the flag of the United States of America.
We haven't started yet. Please rise as we serve the flag of the greatest country in the world, the American flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Stare has a few words to say before we say it. All right, thank you, Bill. Thank you, Sean. All right, this time, the pledge of amendments.
Amendments to the amendments. Number one, the food bank update. Ms. Reesner will provide an update on the food bank. Then we want to add the following from the finance committee. Item seven C, add additional budget amendment, transfer seven thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars to the finance budget to purchase debt management software. Item seven M would be approval of Portage grant application for Northern Port. The finance committee has recommended approval to target land acquisition from Portage in the twenty twenty-one grant cycle and to obtain two property appraisal as required by Portage. Item number three would be, I mean, number three would be item seven N, approval to list Kitty Hawk properties for sale. The finance committee has recommended approval to list fifty-one thirty-three, Carlane, Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, forty-six acre open lot for two hundred and fifty thousand dollars, and fifty-two hundred, North Corotan Highway, Kitty Hawk, North Carolina, six acres with a thirty-one thousand, eight hundred and thirty-one square foot building for seven million, five hundred thousand dollars for sale by owner and listing county attorney Mike Cox as the point of contact under old business recommendation by appointments committee.
Thank you. What is the finance committee?
The chairman was, um...
Thank you.
What was the food bank update? Was that number one, item one under?
That'd be on the public comment.
Item number one, yes, sir. Under consent agenda, letter B, to recuse Mr. Perry from that vote, can we pull letter B from the consent and add it as item two or, I guess, item one under new business?
We can do it under old business if you want to do that.
Thank you.
Or we can take each one on individual to do.
Yes.
We just do that individual like we've done before. Okay, at this time, I'm asking Lynn Rees to come forward to board to give us a little update on the food bank.
Anybody want to add a little?
Oh, sorry.
We should approve the agendas present.
It's agendaed and amended in a second. In a second. Second, Cecil, any further discussion? All of those in favor, see the five, say aye. Those opposed, like, say no. Okay, Lynn, you're good. Okay, ask Lynn if she can come up and give us a little update on the food bank, the volunteers and support of the communities, trying to get them the food that they're needing, and so she's here tonight. Any questions, which is to give us a little update about how our food bank's been going for the past almost a year now.
Almost a year now. Thank you, Commissioner, and thank you so much for your support of the food bank of the Alamo, and the support that each of you give to us in volunteer time and support. And yes, it's been, it's been ten months, and it has been a whirlwind. We've had a significant decline in volunteer service at the food bank of the Alamo, we rely heavily on volunteer activities, and because of COVID and the fact that most of our volunteers are retirees and in the age band where COVID is high risk, we had our volunteer activities reduced to about two thousand man-hours in this last year, going from fourteen thousand man-hours. So that is a significant cut in volunteer activities, and we've seen our, our need for staffing go up, so we've had to hire additional staffing in order to continue to do the work that we're doing. We've also had to appeal to the governor for disaster declaration in order to bring the National Guard in, in order to help us out. We have eleven National Guard stations with us, they've been with us since September, and as a result, they're in there working each and every day, helping us in the warehouse and out on the, on the distribution deployments that we have throughout the fifteen counties. They're helping at Shee Party when we were out there last Wednesday night, helping with the distributions, loading cars at our pantry programs, and helping with seniors to get on the ICPDA bus with their, with their groceries when, when they come up to the food pantry program. They're doing everything and anything that paid staff never or a volunteer would be asked to do, from making phone calls to handling the, the administrative work necessary to keep the operation going. And when I tell you that what, how, how much our operation has grown in the last year, it's overwhelming to think that we've added so much. Our goal this year was to grow incrementally eleven by eleven percent, and we thought that that was going to be a stretch goal. We figured six or seven percent was going to be ideal for us, and it was going to be achievable. Our distribution has grown by fifty-seven percent in the last ten months. Because of the COVID impact, because children have, have been sent home, a lot of the school districts are not providing meals, we've sent a lot of people for additional food assistance because of the incremental increase in unemployment, and we've seen a lot of increase in families needing assistance as a result of the unemployment. So what that does is it puts people in the line for food assistance in addition to needing additional support for, for utilities, rental assistance, and the compounding impact that it has on the local economy. I, I don't have to tell you, you see it every day as county commissioners, and the impact on us is that we're continuing to provide the USDA commodities that are coming through those, those federal nutrition programs. And thankfully, those programs have been made available, but it also puts the, the strain on our operation, the physical operation. Thankfully, we've had the benefit of having some terrific neighbors out there, and the city and the county have unveiled South Park Commercial Park to us when it was closed down, so that we can park our trucks there. We've been using Big Daddy's back end parking lot for our truck over club, because we've had to rent trucks and trailers to put out there. We have just finished the construction on an eighty thousand cubic foot refrigeration and freezer space, which will increase our capacity from, from twenty pallets of refrigeration and twenty pallets freezer to a hundred plus in each area. So that enables us to bring those trucks and trailers of product that we were storing off campus and in our neighbor's space in-house, and to have it refrigerated onsite, and enables us to have the capacity to have that food regularly coming into us throughout the year. And as we're looking at what's going to happen for the next twelve, twenty-four, thirty-six months, because everything that we've been doing, the predictions are that we're not going to come out of this for probably years, and that means that we're going to have to be prepared to serve and prepared to provide food assistance to those that need assistance while they're trying to recover and build back jobs and build their financial system at home while they're recovering from the setbacks that they've incurred now. And thankfully, with your support, we've been able to, to accommodate that. But when the National Guard goes away, we're going to have to be able to have those resources, and until we can provide volunteers or have the resources of volunteers, that means paid staff. And if you look around town, and I don't want to tell many of you, there's a lot of health wanted signs around. There are not a lot of employers that are able to fill those jobs. We're struggling to find candidates to fill those jobs, and we're having the same, same challenge. We've got four job opportunities available, we're paying market rate for drivers, and we're just having a, a difference of a time trying to get those, those positions filled. And if you're trying to figure out what you're going to do with little ones at home and go back to work, you know, the choices right now are, are hard when you, when you've got to be home taking care of little ones. So if you know of anybody that is looking for full-time employment, even part-time employment, we were a good employer, we offer competitive benefits, we would love to have them reach out to me, I'm happy to talk with them. Anyone that you've worked with, we would love to work with.
So Lynn, we're going to go around the table now. Questions, Bill? Questions of Lynn?
I just want to make one comment. Once a month, I give a neighbor a ride to your place of operations, the food bank, so that they can get their monthly allocation. And that's a new experience for me, and you're doing a great job for the community. And of course, the, the first time that I gave them a ride out there, they said, "Are you after something, too?"
They wanted to make sure that if you had a need, that you, we were taking care of you as well.
Well, commissioners are poor also, but no, I was not after something. Keep up the good work.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Stare.
Sean, I'll just echo what Dr. Stare did and say that we appreciate the effort that you put forth in our community, we know the need is great, no shortage of opportunities here in this area, and some of the stats that you presented tonight, just, I mean, they just help drive home how great that change in that demand really is in this area. So thank you again, and thank you for coming by and keeping us updated.
Absolutely.
Jonathan?
Yes, thank you very much.
Stare?
Fifty-seven percent had not been, is crazy.
It is, it is, we're pacing at the same level as, as nationally our sister food banks are. It was slow to occur in, in rural areas across the country, but when it hit, it hit, and it'll be slower to receive, because the resources and the jobs market will be slower to come back in, in the rural communities.
How many, remind me again, how many counties?
Fifteen.
We do fifteen here.
We service fifteen counties out of a hundred and forty-nine counties.
As far as meeting the need of that fifty-seven percent, are you getting what you need from the federal government to meet those, that demand?
We've been very, very fortunate with the amount of food that's been allocated to us at this time, and with the resources that have been made available through some of the funders that have stepped up. I don't know whether you've heard, but we did receive the McKenzie Scott Award, and we're very fortunate that we received that gift, it was three million dollars. The board and I are working with leadership team at the food bank to identify how we utilize that gift. We were selected out of two hundred food banks nationwide, there were forty-two food banks that were awarded that gift, and we were, they, they asked their donor advisors to sit down and vet the food banks, and our food bank was scrutinized and was awarded a gift over a hundred and fifty-two others. So I'm very proud to be able to tell you that. What criteria they used, I don't know, because it was anonymous. But we work very hard, and I would say that if they use the same standards that Feeding America uses to, to monitor compliance, they use the same standards that Charity Navigator uses to evaluate our, our fiduciary compliance with donor management and financial stewardship, then, you know, I, I agree with them. We are worthy of every, every condition and, and donation, because we don't get the same recognition from donors at that level as other donors, because we just, they, we're over here in northeastern North Carolina, we don't get those donors, you know? So I'm just incredibly, we're incredibly blessed.
And lastly, the, the new building that you put up, what size did you say it was?
It's seventy-five hundred square feet.
Okay, all air-conditioned, I mean, not air-conditioned, but freezer space?
It is, it is, it's two thousand square feet of, it's actually four thousand square feet of freezer and cooler space. But it's cubic feet, eighty thousand cubic feet. Six o'clock at night, very warm.
Well, I was thinking, did you say eighty thousand? Where's it at? That's an exhale.
It's cubic, it's cubic feet. It'll hold a hundred pallets in each unit.
That's right. I was impressed, like, my God, I have not seen that, I missed it though.
The, when we look at where we need to be in order to meet the need here in northeastern North Carolina, we need to be serving eleven million pounds annually in order to do that. And our strategic plan says that we were going to try and close that, that deal gap by two thousand and twenty-five. We're going to be at eleven million pounds by next year, and in order to do that, to be in that space, we need to increase our footprint. So the board is already talking about how do we utilize that gift and make the best use of that, and turn that into a win for northeastern North Carolina to engage with our donors here and increase our footprint. We already own the property that's out there, so how do we continue to, to enlarge that space so that we can, we can end hunger by two thousand and twenty-five and have the space to erase hunger right there?
Excellent. Thank you. Thank you, Mary.
Cecil?
Let me ask a question about the kind of need for, of help, you know, to assist. Sound like you might be able to show a help?
Little bit.
Little bit. What time of day is, is it, is a good time for people to, to work out and to cut off the systems?
We're there Monday through Friday from eight to five, so if you want to come out and roll up your sleeves and come out and help us and work side by side with, with us and the National Guard, we would love to have you come out. If you have a night or a weekend you'd like to come out, we're there the first Saturday of the month from eight to noon. So we have that special designation from Saturday on eighth, first Saturday of the month, eight to noon, or the first, the second Wednesday of the month, this, this Wednesday, from five to seven. So we try and make arrangements in the evening for working folks that want to come out and, and do some volunteer activities. So if you want to get your troop or civic organization together and come out, we talk to Brian or talk to me, and we'd be happy to arrange for you to come out, even outside of those special days and hours.
Thank you. Thank you for what you do.
You too, Cecil. We appreciate it.
I'd like to go everyone else and say thank you very much. I know it means a lot to the residents of Paschatan County, I'm sure they appreciate it.
We do, too.
Thank you.
I appreciate the opportunity to come out and speak. It's been a while since I've been asked to come out to speak because of COVID, and this is, this is, this is one of the things that I truly enjoy, to come out and talk to you about what we're doing, how we're doing, and how you can engage with us.
Does everybody get Brian Gray's email from the Food Bank Weekly? I'm not, John, if you might not get it yet, I imagine the rest of the board does. Yeah, Lynn, thank you for coming on short notice, but I've been following Brian's request for help, also I've been following the food and the capabilities, and our community in fifteen other counties should be very thankful for what you do for our regions.
The team effort, let me tell you, it takes, it takes the team, from the team in the warehouse to the community as well. So thank you very much for what you do. And I just want to give, give kudos to the sheriff's department, the police department as well, that come out to help us, to volunteer at our distribution. They help load and package and, and push groceries with us at the distribution. So for those of you that haven't been out there and didn't know that, they're out there helping us, they're giving time and talent when we need, we need their support as well. So I see the sheriff is here tonight, and I just want to give him an ad-avoid, and I want to give an ad-avoid to the health department. The health department put the food bank staff on the priority list as one B. My team has not taken a break other than when we've had close contact with the COVID exposure. We've been out there serving and in the, in the trenches with everybody else, and for you all to give my staff the priority to have the vaccine and to be protected meant a lot to us, and it meant a lot to my board of directors, but it meant a lot to us because it meant that, that you cared about the fact that what we do is just as important as providing protection and service to, to the community. So thank you so much for allowing us to be on that priority list at the World Fest, and it shows that you truly do care about the world and the union service of these bikes. Thank you for everything you do to support us at the Food Bank of the Alamo.
Thank you, Liz.
Thank you very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Good job. Lynn, do we have anyone else here to speak on public comments? I love your honesty and clarity, but, all right? Under old business, there's not there, under consent agenda, we've...
You will do the regulation of current needs under old business?
It's not there.
For, for committee?
You can do that, but you can do it under new business, which one?
Thank you.
Do, do, yeah, already at the top, you want to do that under the appointments committee? It doesn't matter.
Issue, land, old business.
Okay. Okay, so one item under old business, recommend appointment of Ms. Melissa Russell to the Alamo, the animal control board. This appointment, we need to allow for two weeks, to allow for any additional applications against Ms. Melissa Russell to the animal control.
Okay.
Next, I'll make that as a motion from the appointments committee.
Second, second motion, and second, any further discussion? All of those in favor, see the five, say aye. Those, those like, sign. Okay. Under the consent agenda, item B, I think it's a request to recuse Mr. Perry from that item based on title waste fee releases, so we'll need a motion to recuse Mr. Perry for item B. We'll vote on that several.
So move, second.
Motion from Charles, second. From Sean, any further discussion? All of those in favor, see the five, say aye. Those, those like, signs. Mr. Perry is recused. At this time, we'll vote on tax releases and refunds.
A motion for just item B?
Item B, yes, sir.
A motion to approve of item B?
Second. Yeah, the motion for Perry, second from Sean. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, see the five, say aye. Those, those like, signs. At this time, we'll move forward with the consent agenda from A through, seven. Eight through seven, N, excluding the B, which we just voted on. Does anyone, like, needs to remove any of these items prior to, right? If not, we'll need a motion to approve. I said move. Charles makes the motion to approve the consent agenda, and Cecil makes the second. Any further discussion? All of those in favor, see the five, say aye. Those, those like, signs. Under new business, attorney or manager, if you have any new business to come forward?
Yes, sir.
Attorney's report?
Only reminder that we have the board retreat on Friday, February twenty-sixth. Breakfast will be starting at eight AM, and we'll go on for four PM. We'll be sending detailed information out, but it is at the BLET training room at COA.
Okay. Sheriff, welcome, bye. You got anything to say tonight?
Glad to hear it.
Glad to see you. Thank you. County attorneys report. Internal, external committees, that's behind the spin, we'll start here with Bill on item number eleven, internal and external.
I've got two reports to present to me. First one is the dog, dangerous dog hearing committee that I attended, my first experience, and we met at nine AM on February the ninth, and I was able to get a lot of cooperation from attorney, Mike Cox, who helped us through the meetings, talked us through some of the problems and mentioned some of the things that are going to happen in future. And the first case involved, both of these people, cases appealed, a dog chased a woman on a scooter and bit the person on the leg below the knee, and she wanted to proceed with the lease law. And so she called for the animal control person, and in some cases, that's the dog catcher. And when the dog catcher got there, he said, "Well, I have to take your dog because your dog bit someone." She said, "I want to talk to a real deputy." How does that make you feel? But anyway, he did, he called the police department, they sent a deputy out there, and they were able to take the dog and to the SPCA for examination and confinement for a number of days and shots. And when this case came before the board itself, it was dismissed because the lady that made the complaint was not present. So case dismissed. And number two, that particular area, a man was walking his dog on freeway road when two dogs started chasing the man and his dog. And he, he wanted to pursue the prevention dangerous dog case against the order, and two deputies arrived and took their dogs to SPCA for holding unusual shots that they took. You have to understand what, what the SPCA, you know, giving them the port of SPCA at the minute here, when SPCA takes a dog or an animal, there's a financial responsibility that they're undertaking. They have to give the dog shots, and they have to confine the dog for X number of days, I'm not sure how many that is. Do you know how many days?
I don't, I don't know if three or five is a lot of their days.
Yeah, to, to make sure that the dog is, is not, or they release the dog after that period of time, after the shots, to back to the order, in most cases. This particular case was dismissed also because the lady that made, made the complaint, the man that made the complaint did not come to the meeting, so it's over. And then Mike was very, very helpful in getting us through all that, since that was my first meeting, and by the way, when I got there, I had a lot of people telling me where, where I had to sit, and what I had to say, and I said, "Look, I'm not doing anything. I'm, I'm here to learn, and I'm sorry." And, but he had to, I said, "Lady, what's that I just said?" Okay, so I am learning, and Mike and I, and he's going to get me up to date, and there's a master plan in his mind for looking at all these things that have happened in the past, and all of the, the changes that have been made. Did you say nineteen seventy-six? Is that the date you used?
Some of our, our animal ordinances go back to nineteen seventy-six. We, we, I'll give the board a little preview. We met for two hours and fifteen minutes Friday. preview. We met for two hours and 15 minutes Friday. Some of the sheriff's folks, we've got Brent McHugh and Animal Control, it's from Nick Williams, who's on, does this every day, along with members of the SPCA, were looking at revising all the animal control ordinances. I'll probably talk a little bit about this at the retreat. And, you know, the dangerous dog orders need to be amended. It's from 2005. The full board used to hear those. You wisely chose to set up a committee for those. And so I'm the only person that's attended every one of them. And it's time for a change. And so we are working, we're meeting again this Friday, which will be our third group meeting. And then I hope to have something at this board. And I know you don't like dealing with animal control stuff, but we're going to try to make it as easy as possible for you. Thank you, Dr. Sheriff. Thank you.
Yeah. Okay. So I look forward to meeting with you and
Yes, sir.
learning and, you know, eventually if I'm elected or promoted to be the chair of the board, that's fine. My other meeting was for the SPCA. And one thing that always comes to my mind is, everybody knows SPCA. Nobody knows what does this all stand for? Society for Prevention of Prophylactic Animals. That's what the SPCA is. We need to say that for a lot of them than just say SPCA, in my opinion. But anyways, I was, this is my first Zoom meeting. And I didn't know, I told you last week how little I knew, and Mr. Perry joins me about Zoom. But I'm all, I'm all at the speed with Zoom now, thanks to a county manager who arranged to have Mr. Brown, our number one IT guy, come to my office 30 minutes before to be on camera. And he knew all the buttons to push. He knew where we should be. And he said, where's your camera? I said, what are you talking about, camera? I don't have a camera. But you don't, but you do. Then he pulled a lever up, there's a camera right on my computer. So I'm wondering a lot. And the meeting went real good. That group has about 20, they got about 20 volunteers in that group. And Supposedly about 20. We had about 14, I think, people there at that time. But you've got some top people. We, Pastate County, got some top people on that committee. And let me read some names here. Mark Bailey, Ginger Parrish, who was the chair of that committee. Betty Lyons, everybody knows Betty Lyons. Andrew Howard, Lisa Harmon, who's also an attorney. Randy, this is a Pastate slash Camden County SPCA. Randy Crady, who represents Camden. Ann Hoffman, everybody knows Ann Hoffman, and others. So they've got a good group. They're all volunteers. And during their meeting, which lasted about 30 minutes, there were a number of them that made presentations on areas that they work in, like finances, fundraising. And they, that particular outfit, you know, they raised a lot of their own money. Of course, they're going to be asking us for a few dollars when we get to May, but we won't worry about that tonight. But at any rate, they have what's called a no ball event. How many, how many people here have ever attended or have ever signed up for a no ball event? Is there only one?
Yeah, it's a fundraiser, but
Yeah. They raised $14,000 for the no ball event. All you do is send in $10 and you went to the ball. And that's pretty innovative, I would say. Then they gave a report on their shelter income, about rabies clinics, vet medications. They spend $20,000 a year on vet medications. And the veterans are very cooperative with these individuals, but they have to charge something. So even at reduced rates, they're spending $20,000. And then spay neuter fees, $14,000. So I got a good start with the Zoom. I won't have to be calling you next time, you know, to get me going, because I got it all written down now. And I'll have my wife later to make sure I do things right. At any rate, everything went good. And That's it for my two provisions.
Perfect. Thank you. Good update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'll be brief. I've got three things I want to talk to you about. You guys heard earlier about some of the Newland traffic concerns that were brought up to Mr. Perry, Mr. Jordan, myself, as well as some others. There's definitely enough, I think, up there to warrant us looking into it. I appreciate pulling together the highway folks from the state here to really open up that discussion. I do think we get kind of down a slippery slope until we start talking about, you know, incorporating too, too much in underground utilities and signage and stuff like that. Maybe that is a discussion, but not necessarily part of this one. And I really don't want to impact and, you know, the real good, meaningful work that some citizens brought to us. Next is Parks and Rec. I did have a meeting on that last week, first one with the new Parks and Rec. I think it was kind of news that everybody in the group, or maybe they didn't realize, we've got some new people. I mean, we didn't meet at all last year with all the COVID stuff. With the changes that we've got to enter local agreements, we've got some, we've got some work to do to continue to steer that committee. But I am encouraged about the direction that we will hopefully be headed soon. Last thing is workforce development is in desperate need for business and industry reps, not only at P-Tank, but some of the other surrounding counties. If you know of a hiring manager that is interested in getting into, onto the workforce development board for any of the neighboring counties in this area, there's a couple of us that they can reach out to, myself, probably Commissioner Griffin as well, through the Alamo Commission there. They're just desperate for some, for some of those business and industry reps. So that's all I have to say.
Jonathan, do you have a meeting spot?
I haven't had a meeting yet.
You've got one coming up there. Perry?
Yeah, one. Yeah, I can't. We can just move on that one. Yeah, we, it's just, I can't. I guess that goes far. We have a next meeting. So I had Tourism Development already, just orientation meeting with Corinna and Ms. Sanders, chairperson, just to bring me up to speaking on what they got going on, so we can move forward. So I would be the clueless guy, but I'm often am anyway, but I would have more knowledge when we meet this week. And I just thought about when Sean was speaking about the highway stuff again. Anytime, and some, just Jonathan, the Public Safety Committee is comprised of every fire chief, Sheriff Newton, his staff, the police department, emergency management, any public agency, or public safety agency, EMS coordinator, you know, Jerry Noel, our fire department coordinator, Robert Vois. They meet monthly. They haven't met recently because of COVID. But if anything comes up like this, similar to what's going on there, that committee meets on the 3rd, Wednesday night, remember, sorry? I forgot, we haven't met in a few months. But anyway, that's where the meeting of the minds come, come together of the county public safety people. So stuff like that can, everybody can have input on it. But the same thing may be happening in other forks of the county. So if stuff comes in, it can be definitely run through that committee and you get kind of the eyes and ears of everybody that's interested in one, one joint effort. So.
Perry?
We can be very proud of College of Alabama. If you know, you received a bulletin recently. It shares with you that College of Alabama is one of the best, top colleges in, community colleges in North Carolina. I think that's important for us to really celebrate. The second thing that I have, I've been working very closely with Mr. Batso at the Health Department, on Health Partners, I'm going. And you'll find that the Alamo region is one of the reasons that is actually leading, doing very well as far as the COVID virus operation and supporting our health issues. I think you've been reading in the paper about them participating, going to different churches. I talked with Mr. Betts about how we can do our inner city community. I know that, I noticed that when we have advertisement of being able to give injections, there's a lot of automobiles. So we've figured out a way that we can go in and look at the people that are not driving cars and actually, actually involved with, ended acting with the rest of us and not being vaccinated. But I think that you'll be very proud of what is happening with our health, our health department. The next thing that I'll mention is the fact that we received, I think you all received letters that we probably did not respond to, but I think we really need to respond to the letters. It was involving hunting with dogs all over there. And three letters that's been sent to, to me, I don't know about.
Mr. Perry, that's when we have the special projects a little bit later on.
Yeah. I was just mentioning the fact that we need to take the special projects and address it because in one of them, it was some very serious information. So we really need to take a look at it and not just let it pass by. I think each year, I've been here about 18 years, and we hear about dog hunting. In some way, we need to look at some way that we can actually address it in such a manner, it will give the sheriff an opportunity to help and some say so in what we're doing and trying to help people that are having serious problems with their animals being attacked with dogs and so forth. I think we have responsibility to that, to be able to address it. So I think that's the problem. We'll have a meeting for that. And I guess the last thing that I mentioned is something that I think needed to be mentioned at this particular time. I think President Biden is the 46th President of the United States of America. Is that correct?
Yes.
And one thing that I want to mention being this month, it's February, and Black History Month, the 46th Quartermaster General is an African American from Pastate County named Hawthorne Proctor. So if you know what a quartermaster general, his job is with the military, it's all over the world, if it's possible, disseminating information, products and so forth all over the world. But 46th Quartermaster General also is from Pastate County. And I think that we can be proud of that. So that's the end of my report.
Thank you very much.
Mr. Perry, before Chairman Jordan goes, one thing I forgot to mention. It's been customary, when I was at the fire department, that you made it on, on the news, you had to buy ice cream for everybody. And so
Buffy, I'll
I'm going to give it to Mr. Jordan.
You.
I was a surfer. I was a phone call. He was the face.
Good singer, too.
Butter macan is my favorite, just let the record play.
I suck at that.
And 42nd.
I guess I love.
And that road down is good.
I guess I love. I just got a couple of things. One thing, Trillion is our mental, work with our mental health, patients, here in the community. And one of the things we're trying to find out now is how they are communicating with our sheriff's department, with the police department, with the hospital. So we know, over the years, since I've been on the commission, we've talked about how long some of the mental health people have to go to the hospital, how long they have to stay there, and who has to stay with them, and what the role Trillion is playing. One of the things that's happening, and I think Scott is already involved, and this, Mr. Bro, we're going to bring in the guy from Mobile Crisis so that he can talk to us about. And some, and there's also a program being held, mentioned virtually, where Lisa Wainwright, who was in charge of all the Trillion in North Carolina, she's going to be on, because there are other counties that are having the same question. And they're concerned about how Trillion is coordinating with the different organizations. So this is going to be coming up real soon. March 1st. March 1st. Okay. It's going to be coming up March 1st. And I think it's going to be held virtually, right? Well, that's, that's when he's going to present to the board. Oh, oh. He's going to, he's going to present to the board on March 1st. Okay. On March 4th, I believe, the virtual, at least.
So who's doing that? Who's doing the presentation?
Mark. Oh, his name is, what's his name? I just had his name. I don't, I don't have the name. I'll get the name for him. But he's the one be coming in to do that. And the other thing, I agree with Commissioner Oberman, and the only thing that we don't agree on is that I would have to buy the ice cream, but that's all right.
I think you were overruled there.
Well, yeah, I think, I think, best thing, can we get some real good print on how the Health Department and those involved are working together with getting the vaccinations done. And certainly, I think that we're doing, well, we're doing better than other bordering states, and I won't mention any of them, but I think we're doing a real good job. And I think that all those involved should really be thankful for what they're doing. That's it.
You guys had a lot to talk about, Mike.
Last week, I was at the airport when the COVID shots were being done at the airport. A little bit of a traffic jam in the morning and at lunch, but I think they worked that out. I get traffic for the cars off of the solidated road, which was very good. But if you did get your shot, you would notice that the volunteers were, or those that were paying was, you had the police department, you had the sheriffs, you had the volunteers and health organizations, you had the National Guard. And most of all, you had COA nurses students that were administering shots, the probiotic program. So they're using, as Battle Bass was telling me, you know, those resources are invaluable when you have so many to give out. He battled, his big concerns over the, the teacher population, he broke rank when he went and administered to teachers because he felt they were very important as part of, as part of the care, the families there, and the children. So he did break rank. He did get, had some concerns while he did it, but, you know, he's moving on. He's done a really good job. 30% of our community has been having vaccination shots. If you notice, there's some, some of those that have had the COVID virus are able to get the shots, but they have to be tested for the antibodies to make sure you have a reaction to the shot. Another thing is, is that earlier when we heard from DOT, the concerns along the Morgan's Corner area, but there's two other roads in which they did mention, one was the Simpson-Dentch Road, and also the Hall State connect. I think that was, was that the same, the third road, one of the three roads that they mentioned which were public safety issues. Am I right? Morgan's Corner?
I thought they mentioned Main Street and Northside.
Oh, but that's, that's, we talked about
I heard you say, you're the subconvert.
I thought there was three main corridors, the arteries and
Yeah, the Simpson-Dentch Road.
Yeah. And I know you mentioned Simpson-Dentch. I thought you mentioned also Hall State, but you did mention it, right? So one of the things that, you know, I know that you all want to get bottled down into like a sign and things like that. However, when we did the last special project, we dealt with signs and actual growth along Hall State Boulevard and at the bypass. So I think that if this, when this moves into a special project, because I think you have a couple of things working now, that this thing, you should also address these other three road corridors too, because they are the key arteries. I mean, one of our former county managers didn't think Simpson-Dentch Road would ever be four lane. However, if you look at the amount of traffic that's coming from other parts of the county, the truck traffic, you know, we're going to start seeing that a little bit of better future planning if we can get rid of some of the old plans, DOT plans are on the forecast. Sean, last week volunteered with the resignation Um, Sean last week volunteered with the resignation of Zach Gray, who was the workforce.
Still, that vote's not official till tomorrow.
I understand that. But he, he resigned after twelve years, I think, of being the workforce, work board's chairman. He took a job with the Western Forest State, the Virginian. And, and so Sean sits on that board as a workforce, what is your designation on that?
It's just the business.
Business administration. In which there's twenty, nineteen people that sit on that board. There's regional, it's a regional board. And, and so Sean's going to volunteer until July, I think, we approved tomorrow, I'm hoping. And so, like Sean said, we need volunteers. To sit on that board does have a big impact on planning and modeling for employees throughout the T County region. Another thing is with the, um, the airport authority, my meetings with the airport, I'm on a mission and work in ADC start this week. So I don't have any others. Next month, we'll be busy again with meetings. One thing though, did anybody watch NC Impact this week? Something to this day, it's got, it's like, it's about where four of the local, well, statewide educators have come together and looked at what the next level of education is going to be. Whether it's going to be a four-year program, a two-year program, two-plus-two, high school learning. But those that want to go into the workforce will find, want to have certificates. Whether it's a certificate of work of heating air, certificate of being a framers. They want those jobs. And this is where NC Impact is changing their method of teaching, is to put certificates in, in employees that can have, whether it's a truck driver or whether it's, as you, like you say, you need truck drivers, I think Jeff talked about truck drivers. But the certificates, we're going to start seeing more type of programs. And how, but to get those certificates, you have to have mentors or apprenticeship programs. That's what we were talking about. And so if you start seeing the community asking for apprentice, apprentice programs or mentors to be willing to volunteer, you know, some time to do that. And one of the people that was leading that was the former community college president, which was Scott Rawls. I did take a picture of all those that participated. There's an activity that will definitely have an impact in eastern North Carolina just because of how we're socialized out and the number of diverse jobs that we have in the workforce. So anybody pulls up NC Impact, they'll see it, you know, this premium program about how the education system is monitoring the, the youth now and how our growth will happen with our population. I see Lynn, Shaden Redd, so she understands her needs every day.
Yeah, I'm making some notes.
Very good. All right. Anybody else? All right. This time, I'll see anybody else here speak. We'd like to thank y'all for coming. And meetings adjourn until next March meeting. March first, wait for it.